Good evening, we're going to start the agenda session of the meeting. We have ordinances on second reading, ordinance 111-01. It is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 8/8, loading songs vital. We have ordinance 02, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic is Schedule 24, no parking at any time for the avenue. Ordinance 03, amend the management staff meeting ordinance. Orders on first reading, we have ordinance 111-05. It is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 6, stop intersections. At intersection of Central Avenue and Louis Street, stop signs installed on Central Avenue and Louis Street is a hallway. In the intersection of Lee Avenue and Hennessy Street, stop sign installed on Lee Avenue. Intersection of Hennessy Street and Group Avenue, stop sign installed Group Avenue. And then, intersection of Hennessy Street and Lee Avenue, stop signs installed Hennessy Street and Lee Avenue is a hallway. Intersection of Hennessy Street and Group Avenue, stop signs installed Hennessy Street and Group Avenue is a hallway. Intersection of Bayou Street and Patrick Street, stop signs installed on Bayou Street westbound to Patrick Street, three-way. Resolutions, we have resolution 111-345 to approve the amendment. Resolution 346, a group payroll, 10/6/13, 11/8/13. Resolution 347, authorize refund for minimum taxes and certificates. Resolution 348, approve amendment of resolution 091-366. The reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $3,688 to Martin Payne and Huber for police detective Kenneth Aroni in the matter of Hernandez Lopez, yes, and Granados Moya versus the City of New Brunswick. From $1,000 to $3,688. Resolution 349, approve of private raffle with $50/50 at Wood Campus, Rogers University for New Jersey Poetry Association, and the date is March 1st, 2014. Resolution 350, approve of private raffle merchandise at Wood Campus Center at Rogers University for New Jersey Poetry Association, March 1st, 2014. Resolution 351, approve resolution to establish an S2 account for rainfall control reimbursement funds. Resolution 352, approve request for use of city property requested by the municipal council in locations at Jubilee Park and Pavilion for the Public Chase National 5K race on Saturday, February 8th, 2014, with a rain date of Saturday, February 15th. And the time is from 8:00 AM to 4:30 at the Pavilion, and from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the track. Resolution 353, approve request for street closing, requested by Burton Smith and Brown. The location is West Street between Church and Madison Street. This is for the filming of the fourth annual State of the Firm video, and is required December 6th, 2013, from 12:00 PM to 14:00 PM for his extra duty required. Resolution 354, authorize property union for border of security at 30 South Thomas Street for the amount of $1,457.92. Resolution 355, authorize property union for border of security at 132 Holden Street, and the amount is $3,158.39. Resolution 356, authorize purchase by private department on the state contract 8-70259, WUSA computer contract number N-2483 from Apple Inc., this for one computer, not to exceed $1,592. Resolution 357, approve contract with absolute fire protection company for prior aerial ladder device repair services. This is a term of two months, starting November 21st, 2015, and ending on November 20th, 2014, not to exceed $25,000. Resolution 358, approve of work contract with onsite keep service for emergency vehicles, parts, and repair services. It's a two-month contract, beginning November 21st, 2013, and ending on November 20th, 2014, not to exceed $100,000. Resolution 359, approve of work contract with environmental emissions, you know, C. To furnish a dedicated membrane models for the corable water filtration system, not to exceed $409,108.12. Resolution 360, approve of work contract with cleaning air companies for air turbine maintenance and repairs for air today, like, power system, and at all Lee Cars houses. The term is two months, from November 21st, 2013, and ending on November 20th, 2014, not to exceed $5,000. Resolution 361, approve amendment on resolution 101-286, change order number 11, with Tetan Development Corporation. This is for the Remsen Avenue Fire and City of New York City Center. The amount is $11,127.5. Approve on this change order, we're going to constitute the increase of 20% of the amount of the new contract. Resolution 362, approve resolution to establish D and B rates for various city personnel for the New Jersey City 218 improvement project. Resolution 363, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by NADA Engineering for behalf of this contract of board and board. The reason is to install water lines in connection with the R2JWH East Tower project located at 45 French Street. The dates are on Monday, Monday to Friday, 11:25, 2013, 11:29, 2013, 12:02, 13, 12:06, 13, 12:10, 13, the time is from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Also Saturday and Sunday, 11:23, 13, 11:24, 13, 11:30, 13, 12:01, 13, 12:07, 13, and 12:08, 13, and the time is from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Resolution 364, approve amendment of resolution 061-22. The reason is authorization for student services with Hatch, Hatchmark, McDonald. For 2012, 2013, this line was engineering services, not to exceed $5,612.19. Resolution 365, approve person-to-person place to place plan for legal license with distance waiver. This is from Jamshell, LRC, to Chavilla, New Brunswick, trading as Burger 5, 285 George Street. Resolution 366, approve appointment of council. Name is Benedict Alkman, presentation of Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Novak Avon Chabas versus the City of New Brunswick, not to exceed $1,000. Resolution 367, resolution authorizing establishment of a dedication by Friday for the city self-insurance program as approved on the New Jersey statute. Resolution 368, resolution authorizing establishment of a dedication by Friday for uniform construction compliance fees, third parties, as approved on the New Jersey state statutes. Resolution 369, approve amendment of resolution 111-344 to correct reference to the development agreement with Port of Mac, New Brunswick. This is in reference to 131 Jersey Avenue. Resolution 370, return of rest for Rogers Middle Corporation, a efficient place in New Brunswick. Resolution 371, authorize property union for border of security. Location is 131 Commercial Avenue, and the amount is $276.35. That's all for resolutions, and then we have some matters of discussion by the council. At this time, the meeting's full order, local?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
Council President Escobar.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice of compromise of the Open Call of Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied in that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed in an appropriate voting board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Public Library. Thank you all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Thank you. Let us pause for a moment to all of those Americans and African women that are in the world. Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous?
Both you do accept the minute?
Second.
Yeah, local? Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
I'm staying on my question.
Council President Escobar.
We're going on ordinances, we have several ordinances on second reading. We have ordinance 111-01. It's an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 8/8, loading songs vital. Is Captain Bieber in the hallway, ladies and gentlemen? Anybody from the public has any questions on these specific ordinance? Having none, I would like to take a moment to...
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance 02 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 24, no parking at any time, Polish Avenue. So, if there are any questions on these specific ordinance? Anybody in the public wishes to address the council on these specific ordinance? Having none, I would like to take a moment to...
Motion.
Second, local?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Ordinance 03 is an ordinance to amend the management staff meeting ordinance for 2012, 2014. Does any member of the council have any questions on these specific ordinance? Any member of the public wishes to address the council on these specific ordinance at this time? Having none?
Second, local? Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. We have an ordinance of first reading, ordinance 111-05. It's an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic. Schedule 6, stop intersections. At intersection of Central Avenue and Louis Street, the lead intersection of Lee Avenue and Hennessy Street, intersection of Hennessy Street and Group Avenue, and then, intersection of Hennessy Street and Lee Avenue, intersection of Hennessy Street and Group Avenue, and intersection of Bayou Street and Patrick Street. Who can ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 4th, same day we have the public here.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, we have resolutions 345 to resolution 371. Does any member of the council have any questions on any of these specific ordinance, any resolutions? Does any member of the public wishes to address the council on these resolutions? So, these specific resolutions that we just... Having done, I would like to take a motion to...
Move the resolutions?
Second. The second abstentions. I approve 10 of 369. Local?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, we have various items of discussion by the council. As many of people are aware, this week we have the DPD's, the press release of a situation dealing with the license operator of the City of New Brunswick Water Department. So, as such, I would like to ask Mr. Lappin to give the council an account of the facts related to this matter.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Escobar. I'm going to read from some notes, if that's okay with you. I'm going to try to put some things in chronological order. It is true that the DPD did issue a press release earlier this week. The press release was issued days after administrative order was handed down to us. And I would just like to give you some background information related to their inspection and their review of the operations at the treatment plant. In March of this year, Frank Marash, the Water Utility Director, had elevated turbidity readings at the water treatment plant, and he notified the NJDEP as is required. The DEP can require oil water advisory or require some other public notification in these situations, and the March event, neither was required. After the March event, some new streaming current meters were purchased and installed to continuously monitor coagulant dosage and to optimize turbidity removal. Turbidity is a function of the cloudiness of the water. In addition to that, some new turbidity meters were installed, again, to continuously monitor the filtered water turbidity levels. In June of 2013, Mr. Marash again became aware of elevated turbidity levels at the water treatment plant, and again, he notified the NJDEP as required. The NJDEP determined that a boil water advisory was not necessary, but in this case, they did require public notification. Public notification was made on about July 1, 2013, as the city released its 2012 Consumer Confidence Report. The June 12th event and its potential health impacts were thoroughly discussed in the Consumer Report. These two events caused the NJDEP to conduct an onsite file review and inspection of the New Brunswick water system. The DEP requested that the US EPA conduct a sanitary survey at the same time. These reviews and inspections occurred during June and July of this summer. Also, at the direction of the NJDEP, the city retained the services of a consultant to conduct a comprehensive performance evaluation, or a CPE, of the water treatment plant. Process applications of Fort Collins, Colorado, was retained in July to conduct the CPE. Said evaluation was completed on August 30th. The CP, excuse me, the process applications contract was approved by council on the second meeting of July. In addition, the NJDEP required the city to retain the services of a recognized professional to conduct a comprehensive technical assistance, or a CTA. The purpose of the CTA is to implement solutions to the issues identified in the CPE. The city retained the services of Howard J. Woods Jr. and Associates in July to perform the CTA as required. Mr. Woods is currently working on the CTA, and is likely to continue with said work through the spring of 2014. The major findings coming out of the CPE were that the plant infrastructure was capable of meeting turbidity and disinfection requirements and goals, but that administrative and operational improvements were needed. As of July, excuse me, as of June 2000, as of the June 2013 turbidity event, Mr. Marash had directly assumed all water treatment decisions at the plant. In August of 2013, the city hired two experienced and licensed water professionals to assist in the areas of plant maintenance and treatment operations. We have also made a job offer to a fully licensed T4 operator who has 17 years of experience in the field. He will join us on December 9th, and will serve as the water treatment plant superintendent. On November 6th, the DEP issued an administrative order to the city which identified the findings from its June and July inspections, and ordered the city to produce a public notice for all of the violations listed in the findings. On November 6th, the NJDEP also served upon Mr. Ed O'Rourke, the licensed operator, an administrative order and notice of civil administrative penalty assessment and notice of license suspension. The administrative order alleges that Mr. O'Rourke reported false turbidity, disinfection, and total coliform data to the NJDEP on numerous occasions. Mr. O'Rourke was previously suspended by the city. Mr. O'Rourke's been the licensed operator since 1986. He's been with us for 27 years in that capacity. On November 14th, the NJDEP released a press release describing the enforcement action to be taken against the New Brunswick Water Department. On Friday, November 15th, the city met with NJDEP to complete the writing of a public notice, which will be mailed out to all consumers and residents by November 37th. Our drinking waters since June of this year have been fully compliant with all federal state regulations. Earlier this month, the city released documents to the New Jersey Attorney General's Office related to the inspection over the summer. The city regrets these very unfortunate events. We have fully cooperated with the NJDEP and the US EPA. We have initiated significant corrective actions to date. We have reported events to the proper authorities when we learned of them. There are some folks here tonight grateful that they were willing to come to the meeting. I'd like to introduce to you Fred Sickles from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. He's the director of, he's the director of the Division of Water Supply and Geosciences. And I would like to introduce Ms. Karen Fell, who's the Assistant Director of Water Supply Operations Element for New Jersey DEP. These two individuals have spent a lot of time with us this summer, and have been working with us on the text of the public notice which is coming out later this month.
Will you look over to the microphone, I don't know. Just for the record, just in case.
Good evening, my name is Fred Sickles. I'm the Director of the Division of Water Supply and Geoscience in the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The reason I'm here is that I just wanted to provide our perspective on how things have been improving and where the water system's going since the events over the last few years. I don't want to downplay the seriousness of the historical issues, but they're all on the record, and I think we all know what they are. I think it's important for us, the perspective of where we're going and where we are now and where we're headed. I'm very confident, as my staff are, with the changes and the improvements being made by your current management team. I think some of the organizational changes, the oversight changes, certainly the reporting amongst the various levels of the organization certainly will be helpful. The experience that you're bringing in is, you know, good talent. They should be able to stay on top of these things. So, we think that the actions and the people you've brought in are making the right decisions. We're very confident, I can't say I won't, you'll never have another violation. You won't get a nice visit from us, we do inspections all the time. But we're very confident where you're headed. Right now, it seems to be working very well, the water quality is good. The changes that have been made, I think, are just going to lead to a more efficient and effective water system for everybody in the future. The folks that you brought in to assist Frank Marash and his folks on evaluating what's going on are all top-notch people. We couldn't recommend it anybody better. I think they're getting very good recommendations from those, and what we're seeing is it being implemented. And, you know, from what I gather from just hearing it, is that they've done a lot of support from the city to do the right thing. So, again, that's, that makes me confident. The biggest problem is sometimes we have a water systems that disconnect between the engineers and the people that have to watch the budgets and the elected officials. And what I'm seeing so far is that that's been working really well, and there is a coordinated effort to improve the system. So, I just wanted to come because, you know, we dwell on some things, and like I said, I'm not going to underplay the seriousness of those, and we're going to be working with New Brunswick, we can water department on the order and continue to communicate with them. But I just want to give you a perspective that, you know, there's been some major changes here, and I think the support you've given to the folks in the water department are important, and they haven't gone unnoticed by us. You know, they've responded pretty quickly, and actually, some of the things are being improved before we even sent some of the orders out. So, that's what I'm here for, is to give us, give you our perspective. Because, you know, sometimes when these events happen, a lot of things get said, and some of them may be true, just other than more. And I just wanted to set the record straight as to where we are.
Thank you.
And we just continue to be available. I know people don't like that we're from the state, we're here to help you. But in this particular case, we really do. Our number one drive, and Karen's here and her staff, is to make sure that people have safe drinking water, and we think we do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, is there anything else? I'll be here for the rest of the evening, but nice meeting all of you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I had nothing else to report. Karen, did you want to speak?
Do you want to be, I'd like to say so.
Council, my name's Karen Fell, and the Assistant Director of the Water Supply Operations Element. I would just, you know, agree with what Fred has said, that we have had full cooperation, that you, that the water plant is taking major steps to right the ship. The great news is, is that structurally, you know, kind of the bricks and mortar, there aren't very many issues. And so, you know, a lot of it is just operations, and those changes are being made very quickly, and we're very, you know, we're very encouraged, and things seem to be going very well now. So, I just, you know, would agree with what Fred had said, and let you know that we have been in close contact, and we will continue to be as necessary.
Thank you. Any questions from the council members?
I just want to thank Mr. Marash and his staff, and the entire water department. Unfortunately, the actions of one or two can often lead to a negative reaction for different people. But I think the water department and the City of New Brunswick, and the direction of Mr. Marash is doing the right thing, keep up the work.
I would just like to say that I certainly regret...
Name, name?
I'm sorry, Frank Marash, the Director of Water Utility. I would just like to say that, you know, it is regrettable that these things happened in the past. I can assure you that, you know, we got on this as quickly as we could and started corrective actions immediately. You know, I may not live in the city, but I certainly spend enough time here. I drink this water every day. My employees live in the city, I have friends that live in the city. They drink this water every day. This is personal to me, okay? And I certainly hope that this one event, you know, and one particular individual, you know, doesn't mark the utility as a whole. We have a lot of very dedicated, loyal, moral, ethical, hard-working people that work around the clock to make sure that the, you know, utility works. And that's why you can turn your faucet on at any time, day or night, and water comes out. So, I just want to go with that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Marash. Anybody in the public wishes to address the council on this issue? Just come to the microphone, state your name, address, and any question.
March cover to Comstock Street, and I am livid. I mean, I want to understand why it took three years for you guys to figure this out. I mean, it's just one guy, just kind of did his own thing for three years? I mean, I don't get it. I mean, you have lost my trust. I live right by the water company, I live on Comstock Street. I can walk to the water company. I won't tell you what I see, okay? But neither here nor there, it has nothing to do with this. The point is, is that how am I supposed to trust you moving on? How am I supposed to trust you moving on, okay? Would you drink this water? This is from the taps of New Brunswick.
Rest, you put a rest before I should say anything.
This is from the taps of New Brunswick, okay? In order to regain my trust, I would like you all to take some of this and drink it. I prove it. You're welcome.
Last night, I had a...
Okay, there you go.
Bring it to me, I'll bring it very easily. So, last night, I had some water myself. This water is from, this water is from the New Brunswick water.
Have the paramedics stand by.
How about you guys?
I'll take it from here if you don't mind.
Yes, okay, there you go.
Just pour it before I let go. Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments and stuff. Hopefully, that people follow. I ain't making it. It's all right, I trust you. Thank you. I appreciate it, I really do. Wonderful, you gotta take it down.
You gave it to them? You want to give them?
Make yourself happy.
Like, this is despicable what was done. And what is more offensive than that is that nothing was done when this issue was brought to your attention at a council meeting on October 16th.
Why do you mean by that?
I was here, did I not ask whether or not there was a federal investigation into the water utility?
I got excited, there was no federal investigation. Mr. Marash, when did the DDP actually start an investigation?
They did their, they did a file review and an inspection in June and July, and those are their words. The term is not investigation.
He's saying inspection, is that it?
Okay. So, what did you know and when did you know it?
The only thing that we noticed was, given to us that there was an issue with the turbidity of the water and it was notified by the Fire Department Bureau and then we notified the residents. And if you recall, we were the one who brought it up to the public even before it came out. So, that the residents didn't even know this in their homes, so.
You know, when I asked, you didn't seem to think there was anything wrong.
That was taken care of, research and care of. It happened. We admitted that there was an issue.
No, you didn't remember.
No, you said an investigation, Mr. Cladwell. So don't start twisting because I don't like this, you know, to flourish your stories and putting, you know, scandals and all of that. Let's go with the facts.
Please consider you talking down. Go ahead, keep talking down.
When the question that you asked, you said an investigation, there was no investigation. As I told you right now, there was an inspection. That's what I knew. At that time, I didn't know about this. At the last meeting, if you're asking about this, actually, the press release that came out, this situation with the waters, I did not know at that time at the last meeting. That's your question, which is two different things.
Okay. And that's the problem, is that after that, you didn't look into it further. You didn't come to the next meeting and say, actually, there's been a file review. Actually, there's a problem with the water for three years and we've covered it up. You didn't look into it further. And immediately after the press release was issued, the following morning, I had sent an email to you and to everyone, and it was very simple. I quoted the Commissioner of the DEP, Bob Martin. He said, quote, "These are serious violations. Any deviation from those standards is an unacceptable violation of the public trust." And I posed the question to you, what do you have to say for this unacceptable violation of the public trust? And you didn't get back to me.
Absolutely, I did not.
You didn't make a statement. The mayor didn't make a statement. Nobody cared enough to do anything about it, but just let it ride until this meeting. That is a joke, that's an embarrassment. You should all be ashamed of yourselves.
That's your interpretation.
And it's pretty clear that folks knew what was going on, knew when I was asking about the federal investigation, that in fact, something was up in the water utility. And if you didn't know, that's on you. And if you did know and you didn't tell us the truth, the full truth, then that's on you also. I don't know what to say. I'm a big supporter.
You interpreted, that's your interpretation, Mr. Cladwell. I just want to make sure that that's the interpretation, your interpretation, and I cannot change that, that's your interpretation. But those are not the facts. Well, go ahead.
You can interrupt me as many times as you like, I'm going to keep going. The truth of the matter is that this was a cover-up. And this is typical for New Brunswick. This is how New Brunswick has been operating. There's a problem with the water, don't tell anybody. Keep it in-house. Cover it up. And that's what happened. We didn't have a water director for five years. I want to know, why didn't you fire the person who's responsible for this? He hasn't been fired.
Yeah, we said he hasn't been fired. That was my question. I posed that question. And the reason is because this gentleman has the right to an administrative hearing. He had to request one from the state and he has the right to have one from the state and he has the right to have one from the city of us.
Point of order, can't you fire him? Is it matter of law?
He's been suspended without pay. He's entitled to an administrative hearing at our level as well as with the DEP. And we'll see how it plays out. He's entitled to his defense.
When was he suspended?
Earlier this month.
So, it seems that people knew there was a problem before then. This man was allowed to stay in the job, but he was removed from some responsibilities. And now, months later, only after the DEP has made these serious accusations, is anything being done about it?
Well, Mr. Cladwell, I say, let's get it right for a little bit. New Brunswick, Mr. Marash, that called the DEP when there was an issue with the turbidity.
Which is what you're always supposed to do when there's an issue with turbidity.
Thank you. So don't say that we did not report and we didn't do anything. Go ahead.
Right. The three years that you were covering it up, that's what I'm talking about. You were elected in 2010. That's when this problem started. You have nothing to say for your lack of oversight, for your role? The city council didn't even think this was important enough to put it on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. You obviously don't care enough about this.
I'm interested about it right now, Mr. Cladwell. Next question, please. Thank you.
It's a public comment, I'm going to continue my public comments. I want to speak about Mr. Marquette, who was the one who dismissed any potential of there being an investigation into the water utility. You know, trying to make it seem like that would be crazy. He was quoted in the Daily Target. He didn't respond to my request for comment, but he responded to the Daily Target and said, quote, "It doesn't look like anyone was put in a health risk." And I think it's very important, those two words, "look like." That's what Mr. Marquette cares about. He cares what it looks like. He doesn't care if anyone was actually put at a health risk. You people don't care if anyone was actually put at a health risk. You just care what it looks like. And I think that you've shown in this entire debacle that you're not up for the job, that you're not doing the job. I mean, why not fire Mr. O'Rourke? Why not punish Mr. Loughlin, who was overseeing the department? Instead, he was paid handsomely and got a city truck to be in charge of the water utility. You know, why not at least make a statement? The press release was released Friday. Why not talk to somebody? Talk to the press, talk to your constituents and actually tell them how this happened and what role you played and why you're on the right side of it? You didn't do that because it wasn't important enough to you and you'd rather just cover it up. And that same mentality that got us in this mess continues. And this counsel and this mayor, who didn't even think it's important enough to come here tonight, didn't think it's important enough to come here tonight and tell the citizens why they were covering up violations for three years. What do you have to say for yourself?
Thank you for your statement, Mr. Cladwell. Are you done?
It's an embarrassing violation of the public trust and I call your resign because it's not.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishes to address the counsel?
Yes. Good evening. Beverly Marshall, 33 Commercial Avenue, here in New Brunswick, Canada. I want to know, when was the residents notified of the water problem?
The June water problem was, notification was made on July 1st. And the notification for all of the other findings that just came out on November 6th will be made to the public by November 27th, which is in agreement with the DEP's review of the document.
I'm also on the panel for Rodea and Sauvage Chemical and it's the community advisory panel. And we did a walkthrough, the water plant here in New Brunswick in the Sarahville. They gave us these, this book on the water and how, and this was in 2011. And they gave us this here book and more paperwork about how good our water is. And I walked in, I walked in the plant with a bottle of Poland Spring. So, one of the gentlemen there said, you know, that's an insult to the New Brunswick Water Plant to walk in there with a bottle of Poland Spring water. You know, and thinking about it now, all of this time, the residents, including me, we've been drinking contaminated water. Now, I still, I still don't know when the residents was notified, but my grandson was in the hospital twice between 2010, 2013. Two times we were there, they had notes all on the water faucets in the hospital. Do not wash your hands with the water. And it still didn't dawn on me, you know, that the water was contaminated. But these signs were there twice and to notify a hospital and not notify the residents, we have a lot of people here that are drinking bad water. We have a lot of sick children that are drinking bad water. We have families here that cannot afford to purchase spring water. So when something like this happened and then you want the residents to trust you, there's, we can't. Because we're constantly telling, you're constantly telling us lies and you have a smile on your face. And it's unfair to the residents of New Brunswick.
I'm sorry, I just have one more question. How were they notified?
Excuse me. Mr. Marash, I have a question. In terms of the quality of the water, that the residents, you know, are expressing that it's contaminated water, is that inaccurate depiction of the water quality of our water in the city?
Turbidity in and of itself is not a contaminant. It inhibits or limits the disinfection projects. So, the presence of turbidity in and of itself is not a health hazard, it just interferes with the disinfection process and could, could cause it to be less effective. Honestly, the higher the turbidity, the more interference it causes.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Marash?
Does the DEP have any direct evidence that public health was impacted?
No, we don't have direct evidence. We haven't got any reports or anything.
Yes, sir. Name and address?
Hi, my name's Sean Monahan. I live on Lurkert Street in New Brunswick. Yeah, that's similar to my question. I was wondering if it's possible that anyone was getting sick from the problem with the water.
Yes, Mr. Marash?
It is possible. It is possible. I would just like to say that after the June event that we reported, that I knew about, I did check with the two local hospitals, with St. Peters and with Robert Wood Johnson to see if they had any incidence of people, a higher number of people being admitted with gastrointestinal distress, which would be indicative of the symptoms that you suffer from an alimentary disinfection. And they both reported to me specifically for that event, the June 2013 event, that they did not receive or notice any higher incidence of people being admitted with those type of symptoms.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was also wondering about the relationship with other towns. I understand that New Brunswick Water is provided to Milltown. And I think, is it also in Franklin?
We sell water to Milltown and to Franklin as well, yes. Both towns have been notified and both towns will get a copy of our public notice. They then do with that notice what they choose. They can send that out to their customers or modify the text that they like. I would like to answer this Curbers question. The question was, how is she notified? Every resident in New Brunswick got a direct mailer. Everyone gets one every year. It's called the Consumer Confidence Report. The 2012, June 2012 event was captured and discussed thoroughly in that report. And the public notice to come out at the end of this month will be a direct mailer to everyone who has a mailing address.
Thank you. This is from Monahan. Do you have a question?
I do. So, one of the things I was wondering is, the other towns, we sell the water to them under a contract and I looked at that contract, but I would assume the contract has certain things about maintaining the standards. Is that correct?
Mr. Monahan, can we go back to the question?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So, I was just saying that there's a, you know, there's a contract between our town and the other town and presumably that contract has something about maintaining the standards of the water quality. And now that that's not happened, I, it could be interpreted that we're in violation of that contract. That could lead to legal liability for the city. I wanted to hear from the attorney about this.
Talaq, do you know how these situations affect our residents?
No, I don't. We've spoken to both towns. Both were understanding, both offered their support, but I don't know what their long-term decision will be. The, the contracts speak generally of number of gallons that we will provide them and that type of thing, but I'm sure they expect compliant water, just as our residents would expect it. You know, the, this issue of this, this concept that this was some grand cover-up really needs some explanation. The DEP is charging the water utility for many of these findings. We all understand that. But a licensed operator intentionally falsified documents, falsified data that was reported to the DEP. The thought that we should have known that, okay, you're entitled to that opinion, I suppose, but it is, it is not easy to know that. You folks should not, I understand that you're the elected officials, you should not feel as if you have done anything wrong, in my opinion. This was data that was submitted to the DEP by the licensed operator, someone with 27 years of experience being licensed in that capacity and should have fully known his responsibilities with respect to filing correct data with the DEP.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. That was another question I had. So why, when he knew better, why did he choose to do this?
I cannot offer an answer. Maybe during the, one of his two hearings, maybe we will hear more of an explanation in that area.
And lastly, I was wondering, how can we be sure that this was going on for three years? Is it possible that it's going on longer?
It is possible.
Okay. And what documents were used to determine that those three years were falsified?
The DEP reviewed the reports that they received from the licensed operator and they compared them with raw data that was on file within the water treatment plan. And concluded, and concluded that there must have been a bad information being reported to them.
Talaq, have we ever had to see, have we ever received any notices that we were not in compliance for these years? And with anybody who oversees the water department?
None of this magnitude. We did, we received occasionally over the years, recommendations from them or comments that after inspection, that maybe something was, needed correction, but not to this magnitude. I don't know, Frank or the DEP, they want to speak to that.
Yeah, just, if you could just tell us what documents were, just the names of the documents, like what they were and which ones were being compared.
I guess before that allegedly was a incorrect.
I'm going to ask Frank to speak to that, but it's records related to turbidity, disinfection, chlorine contact time, the readings coming out of certain filters, but I'll let Frank speak to that, I think.
May I ask you a question, please?
There's, the actual report that's submitted monthly to the DEP is a summation of monthly regreadings. Where I can say turbidity is required to be measured and recorded every four hours. So that's six measurements a day, so depending upon the type of number of days in the month, that's times six, that's how many measurements you have. So at the end of the month, of all these measurements, there's two regulations that you have to comply with. Number one is the monthly MCL. You can't have more than 5% of those measurements above point three and at no time can it go above point one. So basically, at the end of the month, there's a lot of number crunching that needs to be done to boil those numbers down to determine if you're in compliance or not. And then those, that data then gets entered onto a one-page summation sheet that gets submitted to the DEP.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
like what they were and which ones were being compared.
I guess before that allegedly was incorrectly.
I'm going to ask Frank to speak to that. But it's records related to turbidity, disinfection, chlorine contact time, the readings coming out of certain filters, but I'll let Frank speak to that, I think.
May I give you a question, please?
There's, the actual report that's submitted monthly to the D E P is a summation of monthly regreadings. Where arguments say turbidity is required to be measured and recorded every four hours. So that's six measurements a day. So depending upon the type of number of days in the month, that's times six, that's how many measurements you have. So at the end of the month of all these measurements, there's two regulations that you have to comply with. Number one is the monthly M C L. You can't have more than 5% of those measurements above point three and at no time can it go above point one. So basically, at the end of the month, there's a lot of number crunching that needs to be done to boil those numbers down to determine if you're in compliance or not. And then those, that data then gets entered onto a one-page summation sheet that gets submitted to the D E P.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
So it's called the monthly M C L? Is that what the name of the report is? What's the actual name of the report? Sorry.
I believe it's B S D W 22 is the form.
One is the disinfected residual form and the other is called the turbidity form. That's what it's called loosely, but it's got a longer name. The interim enhanced surface water treatment roll recording form. But we call it the T U for turbidity form.
Okay. No, I almost, I think so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Escobar, I have a, you have spoke to, try and go, I don't know your last name, in reference to hospitals. Were there any reports on hospitals with patients coming in with stomach problems? The thing is, is that you have children that, especially with my grandson, he's G2 fed. So they have G I gastroenterologists and for children. So most of the parents will take their children to the doctor's office instead of the hospital. So that's one thing that should be investigated, you know, not the hospitals. Because he said it was only a couple. That's why my grandson was in the hospital twice because of his stomach. And you have a lot of children that has G tubes inserted and they get their, or all of their feedings through there. So it should be investigated on taking count to G I doctors, especially pediatricians here in New Brunswick at 89 French Street, 125 Patterson. You know, that should be checked to see how many children's stomachs was infected.
Mr. Maras, you stated that your grandson was in the hospital. Which hospital was he in?
Robert Wood.
You said that you saw those signs in 2011, you said?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Maras?
Yes, thank you for letting me address you about this. But this has been a misleading discussion in many ways. So I want to recap just a couple of things that we've learned. What we've learned is that it is possible that there was public health problems because of these cover-ups. And I want to make very clear that I did not make the choice to use the word "cover-up." In fact, the D E P used it. It was New Brunswick covered up these violations by submitting false information in reports to N J D E P and failed to issue mandatory public health and safety notices when the violations occurred.
So, there's a very low license of the water department.
No, it's New Brunswick covered up. Those are the words in the report. Now, the important thing that we heard Mr. Maras say is that he looked into whether hospitals experienced any increase in G I problems related to the June turbidity issue that he did properly report to the D E P. You're all trying to make this about the time that he successfully did what the water director's supposed to do, when in fact, there's a history of three years' worth of cover-ups. And no investigation has been done to look into whether anyone had any public health problems, whether there were any public health problems as a result of these things. These are serious. This is a very serious thing. And the council is looking to just brush it away and move on with it. I have, Mr. Anderson, keeping with true to form, he's the only one who responded to my email. And he responded with the question, did not the report indicate that there was no direct evidence that would harm, that the stuff would harm the people? That's the wrong question to be asking if you're council. You shouldn't be asking, isn't it true there was no direct evidence that people were harmed? You should be asking, was there any evidence at all that anyone was harmed? You should be looking out for us, not looking out for the cover-up. Get real, guys, please.
Thank you, Mr. Maras.
I just want to again, say again, that as stated, that's my question. If we have ever been, the water department, again, the action of one person is putting a dam or the department that had been doing, I'm pretty sure if this was not before, something would have been done. I don't think that anybody's taking lightly that this could be a possible health issue for our community, who live here, whether you live around us. We are part of this community, so we drink the water too. This is not an isolated, that we're not thinking about you. We are here, okay? So we are very concerned that maybe we are not expressing the way you want us to express it. But forgive me when I tell you that we are concerned about this. This is the action of one person that, and like I said, you know, my first question is, this person wasn't defied, right? And then it was explained to me that it's a process that needs to be followed, which I understand. We don't take this lightly. And I think that over the leadership of Mr. Maras, that we have seen, you know, the improvement. And I'm very confident with his professionalism, his integrity, that this is not going to happen again. Whatever happened in the past, my question again, have we ever been, we have, this is something that the water departments, I'm pretty sure that they, the Department of Fire and Department of Transportation, so anybody else who is in charge, they come here and inspect and see. So if there would have been an issue prior to that, I'm pretty sure they would have raised it to us. Apparently, there was none until this time point, there was an issue with the two feet of the water. I just want to make that clear, that we are not taking this lightly. We are listening, but we have to be objective. We have to listen to our government.
Yes, Mr. Pippen? Name my address, please.
Mount Pittman, 291 Seaman Street. I agree with Charlie. There should be a higher level of outrage because you're saying that one person, you know, one person can't take the fall for this. Somebody hired that one person. And that one person had supervised. And my focus is, you know, my main concern is the children in the school system. They don't drink bottled water in school. They drink from water fountains. You have, I want to know, when was the school system notified about this? Was it three years ago? Was it in June when you first did the investigation? When was the schools notified and how were they notified?
Inspection, investigation.
Inspection.
Yes, Mr. Maras?
I don't have an answer with respect to the June event, whether the board was notified or not.
Were the children notified October? Did you ever contact the schools? We have, we have a number of schools, a lot of schools here. And we have a lot of children that drink specifically from the water fountain. That's the main concern. That kids can't bring bottled water to school. Their main source of hydration is from a water fountain. And if anything, if it's slightly a problem in our water, shouldn't this school be the main focus? Because we have a pattern of cover-ups. Just recently, you know, we discussed the situation as far as the children being in the bomb scare.
Let's stick to the issue at hand.
I mean, let's stick to the neglect. Let's stick to the pattern of neglect.
Let's, yeah, but let's stick to the issue at hand. After the other public portion, we can talk about it.
Because, Mr. Escobar, you bounce around because you don't want to take responsibility. If I was responsible for hiring an individual, I'd take sole responsibility. I won't throw him under the bus. I'm just as guilty as he is. And for you guys to oversee what's going on within the city, you're just as guilty as the individual that you're throwing under the bus. Because last week, I mentioned we brought back up the situation of the bomb scare and you had no knowledge of it, which was months ago. So now you're throwing people under the bus. Every time, every time a situation happened in this city, you picked one guy to throw under the bus. But we elected you. You're elected officials. Each and every one of you elected officials, you took an oath to protect us. You guys made the decision that we're the best people in this city to make decisions for you, for us, for the community. And you've been dropping the ball every since. So the cover-up and to make an excuse and say that one bad apple is not acceptable. It's unacceptable. And you didn't even notify children who drink this water more than any of us in this room? The schools weren't even contacted? You didn't contact any of the schools? Three years these kids have been drinking this water? How many of you guys have kids that go to these schools, public school systems? You, you're the only one that spoke about it. You're the only one. And are you comfortable with your children drinking this water?
Well, I'm comfortable. Can I?
Yeah, please, please.
Can I address that?
I want to be, Mr. Pittman, hello? I want to be right here.
And I'm not going to address it exactly. Yes, I do have kids who drink the water at home, in the school system. Unlike some people, my kids go to New Brunswick school system. And I don't take lightly to people saying that we cover something up. Soon as we, some days, I get up in the morning, I turn my water, because I live next to the river, the water grinds. I'm like, okay, what's going on here? I'll get on the phone. I notify my neighbors. So my kids do drink this water. And I'll be damned if I'm ever say that I'm going to brush something away and cover it up. And I'm not going to come with a false sense of, okay, everything blows up all of a sudden, it's a scandal. There are bad seeds everywhere. Things are going to happen. We are, we are a city, just like any other corporation, where things happen. There are bad seeds. But can you, can you look and say, okay, this made this corporation bad, this made this person bad? No, there are bad seeds everywhere. Let's deal with it. There are situations we have to go. I want that person fired also. But there are ways that we have to go about it. There's a process. We can't just do stuff haphazardly. This is a professional, this is a professional thing that we have to do. We have to go through it. Then what happens all of a sudden? We fire somebody. Then they shoot the city. Then what happens? We have to pay, then all of a sudden, there's an outrage. Because now we have to pay a certain amount of money out. There's a process. Let's work together to make sure it does not happen again. Instead of kicking, going back, picking off bombs here, picking off bombs there, hoping that it blows up into something else. I asked some people here, would you have, would you have preferred that more people got sick? So there'd be more collective outrage? That's what I asked. Yes, my kids do go to the school. And I'm comfortable right now on what's going on right now. And do I want things to happen faster? Yes, I do. But we have to go through a process.
You're the only one that spoke about you having children that go to school. This administration is kind of big.
Mine is 13, I went to the school system.
This is the question because that's sort of a contradiction. You're saying, let's fix the problem and let's move forward. But the person that you're throwing under the bus responsible for the problem is not fired yet. It's still, he still has to have a hearing. So that's a chance that he can return. So we didn't even fix the problem yet. No, no, you said, you said, we fixed it, let's move on. But the person that's responsible for this catastrophe still has a right to a hearing. So we can't move on. We can't move on.
And, and it gives me...
And you just add as a contradiction.
Mr. Pittman, excuse me.
Did you, there's a process there?
There's a process, exactly. There's a process. I wish it was higher. My idea was right away, is this person fired. There is a process. If you are an employee in a company and they fire you, there's a process. Everybody has a process. Because again, you have to make sure, and I hope, and I, I hope it's not on the fire watch because I would want that, that person to be back working here.
If he was on your watch, you should be fired. Whoever, whoever watch he was under should be fired, terminated with him. Whoever watch he was under should be terminated with him. Because you're just sick and tired of New Brunswick picking one guy to throw under a bus when a situation happens.
Well, we have to look at situation. I understand that the person who supervised it knew it. But if you have an employee who has been a good employee, you cannot bluntly say, okay, this person, if you trust that person, if I trust you to do a job, and I trust you because I have employees on my supervision. And ultimately, yes, it's my responsibility. But if I trust you that you are a good employee, that I have, I have no reason to doubt your competency. That what you have been doing, I don't have to be micromanaging you because I trust that you are doing your job. And the information that I'm getting is that you're doing your job. If I see something that is not right, then it's my responsibility to do something. And then I could tackle it and I could address that issue. But if you have been doing great for me, why should I, I be playing for somebody who's been doing a period and who's doing his job? And I think, I was confident that he is, this guy has been with the city since 1987. I would have, it would have not come into my mind that a person would do something like that. And I, and I still don't comprehend and I would like to see, and I ask also, what were, what was he thinking? Why did he do this? I may know, I might never know. Hopefully, we will find out.
You're superb, I would hope that you wouldn't wait three years to see if I'm doing an adequate job. And I ask the city of New Brunswick, please contact the school system and tell them that this kid's been drinking contaminated water for three years. Thank you.
Name my address, please.
Jack Kato, Relentless Police, Second Ward. I've been attending the council pretty much on and off for about six months. I noticed there appear to be, there seems to be a lack of communication between the public and the council and the different administrations in the city. So whether it's an investigation or an inspection, whether it's a bomb scare or just a non-normal threat, what ways are you guys going to take to kind of improve this communication between the public and the administration and between the council so that we can regain this trust?
The only thing I have to tell you is that as soon as I find out, in the same as we did last time in June, if there's something that is way on to the, I don't talk to Mr. Flattville every five minutes because he would like me to be answering questions in the evening every five minutes. I do make a point because I think that everybody should be aware of. The same thing that, you know, that's what we're doing this way. I wish, you know, it was, we didn't have to do this. But I have tried my best that every time there's a situation that is to be addressed, I mean, before, even before it's out there, just to make sure that we be there. Because I know there's a lot of miscommunication. And I think that if there's miscommunication, we might have some challenges here. But I think that the miscommunication, the biggest one is for the people out there who are assuming and making stories and assuming we're having all the facts. Wish it doesn't be service to our community because we shouldn't be using those tactics to scare our community. Let's get the facts straight. Let's hear first. And then if you're not satisfied while you're here and the answer is like, okay, then you have the right to go out there and then make an informed decision or informed information out there. But do not take out completely, like saying stuff out there that is not true and making it seem like it's something bigger than it is. That's what I have an issue. So that's why, as best as I can, we have tried here to, you know, for the beginning. And I think that this even before me, what I'm talking about since I started here. I have been trying my best to be, you know, for us to be as transparent as possible when there's an issue to bring it forth and to have a community conform with and be open to talk to us. That's all I can tell you. But thank you for your coming and we will take it into account. Thank you so much.
Yes, name my address?
Yes, my name is William, I'm in the sixth ward. I just have to follow up on one thing. My understanding is the N J D E P, there's periodic inspections, is that correct?
Yes, they do annual inspections.
So is the raw data ever compared to the report? So this might have turned up earlier or that's not part of the inspection?
So that...
I've never participated in that kind of inspection. But I think similar data is reviewed. I don't know for certain.
Yes.
Do you have a question, the downstairs?
I mean, yeah, we...
Okay, please.
Yeah, I mean, the department through its enforcement program does do these inspections. There are certain levels because there's a certain level of trust as well with an operator and the type of reports we have. This particular case, some of these things weren't uncovered during those inspections. One of the things we've done though is we're working with my counterparts in the force, who just don't work directly in my program, is that because we don't want things to get by again, we're enhancing our inspections so that we're doing some training between my engineers and the inspectors so that the right questions are asked and they know when data, even if it's reported incorrectly, is suspect. So that's why we're working closely with our enforcement counterparts to improve our inspections. Because, you know, you're only there for a few hours once a year. We do depend on good record-keeping to check things out. So in the future, we, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to, and I am confident that we'll be able to detect things earlier when there's gross errors in reporting. It's, it is really hard. We have thousands of data points. If somebody decides to play with one or two, that they're going to jump out after that. But we, you know, we're working on the chronic issues as well.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
At this point, I don't know more, we're going to move on on the agenda. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Maras, for being here. I thank you all for the present day, you know, for being here. We have another part for discussion is that proposed 2014 city council release schedule. Everybody, you can add it. You can add me in.
Very straightforward, other than the beginning of first meeting. There's no holidays or months, or years, or... The question, the reorganization meeting has to be held for the first seven days. The way we propose it to, is to do it on January 3rd. The first is, is a Wednesday. I don't think you're going to come in on it. He's happy. The old boy happy when on January 3rd, and then the reorganization.
But I won't be here, I'm on my way.
We do it on Thursday, but the very first, very fast turnaround for the U R N meeting on December the... That's why we proposed it at the 4:00 on the 3rd. If you're ready, I'll just be right on the 3rd, Friday night. And you've got time to think about it, but that is already being presented to you now. The contention on Friday, at the 4:00, if you ask us, you will keep the agenda as late as possible. But you know it's impossible, you need to do appointments and reappointments and bank deposits. Not very subsequent to the, it's things that have to happen. Not very subsequent to the, these things that have to happen, but that is...
Well, I wish we'd hear that first meeting, because I'm gonna be telling you that my agenda, but everybody has to see, we'll be here. So, I guess then...
What we generally do, is, is put the, the meeting schedule on at least one December meeting, and then we readact it in January. So, but since the issue here is the very first meeting in January, you're only gonna readact it in December, um, for the session.
The other item that we have, um, on the agenda for discussion is the anti-waste theft ordinance of a resolution. And bear with me, because I'm gonna say this in Spanish, and I think it is important for me to tell the community myself in Spanish also, what I'm about to say. But before, before we start, um, this discussion, I just wanna, eh, this, eh, this discussion by saying that, contrary to what had been reported in an article on an online newspaper, this council, and hear me clearly, this council at no point say that we are not canceling ordinance of waste theft. That's not true. We are not backing off from this, as it was reported. That's the lie. It's not true. What happened, eh, at this point, we are very aware, we are very, uh, interested in making sure that our community is doing it fairly, that they get their hard money. So, do not believe the newspaper article, or the online newspaper saying that we do not, that we're backing off. Because that's not true. They're basing, they're making an assumption out of, that, eh, a sentence that was here saying that we're gonna discuss a resolution ordinance, and they took that as that we are backing off. So that's not true. The reason that we haven't been able to come up with an ordinance, we had a proposed ordinance that was discussed, and we have been in talks with, eh, Unity Square, with Jason, at all times, for those of you who are interested in knowing, uh, trying to come up with the best ordinance for the residents of New Brunswick, who are going through this. The proposed ordinance that we were supposed to have last month, annoyingly to me, on July, we saw it, and, and we was presented, people were looking at it, it had, uh, included penalties for those who are guilty of doing this to, um, to the, eh, employees. That's against the law. There's a law, the New Jersey Legislature, Legislature do not allow you to do that, because they already have penalties. And no municipalities have not put any new laws, putting more penalties to what they already have. Uh, at that time, that's what we, uh, when it came up, uh, for discussion at the last meeting, I said something came up that we need to do more research, that we need to investigate, and we need to come up with something better. So that's what we have been doing. We are continuing to proceed with this. This is not the end of it. In the meantime, I think that in order, this is something that New Brunswick is going through, that we, you know, something that the legislature has in, in the laws. So I think that in the meantime, to put a resolution of us telling the legislature, please change that, in the interest of New Brunswick, and other municipalities that might wanna do this, something, you know, in their community the same way. Let's start with that, and by January, the, December, no later than January, we will have an ordinance that is, you know, will benefit i- i- in the right way, and will be done correctly, to benefit the residents of our community who are going through this. So, my main message to you today is, do not believe what you read out there. That's not true. We are doing something with this. And I'm gonna say, bear with me, because I think it's important for me, for the committee who speaks Spanish, for me to say in Spanish. Me voy a remitir en español, o que le hablé acá. Yo creo que es, ya está todo.
No, no.
Así, así. Ahí sí me oye, por favor. I just wanna repeat again, what I said, I'm referring in Spanish, because I think it's doing a service, that it provides a service out there, where they are giving, giving back information to our community. So, make sure that all of us are, are communicating in Spanish. Comunidad, mi gente, acuerdo. Déjenme decirle esto. Contrario a lo que están diciendo en la comunidad, este consejo no está de acuerdo, no quiere imponer una ordenanza para evitar que se le rompa su salario, eso no es cierto. Este consejo reconoce, sabe y entiende que ese es un problema que ustedes están pasando en la comunidad, y quiere hacer algo. Nosotros nunca vimos que no vamos a poner una ordenanza. Lo que sucede es, que tuvimos que poner, la ordenanza que estábamos proponiendo anteriormente, que estábamos difundiendo, par, también hemos puesto unas penalidades a las compañías que hacen esto, a los empleados, a los empleados. Y por ley, la Constitución, la legislatura de este estado no permite que una municipalidad pueda poner más, imponga más pen- penalidades a las compañías. Por ley no lo permite, porque el gobierno ya lo hace, como ellos sacan. Por lo tanto, cuando se nos trajo eso al caso, se hace un caso de que no lo podíamos hacer. Entonces otra vez, que nos tenemos que sentar en la mesa, y comenzar entonces a ver cuál es la mejor forma de poder, eh, que nosotros como ciudad podamos ayudar a ustedes con esta ordenanza. So, en eso estamos. Eh, lo, esperamos que la para diciembre, lo más tarda de primera, la primera semana de la próxima reunión en enero, la primera reunión, que podamos tener algo, ya una ordenanza puesta. Pero no le creas a la gente que están por ahí hablando tonterías, que no tienen la, la información correcta, de que nosotros estamos echando para atrás sobre esto, es mentira. Mientras tanto, queremos estar proponiendo una resolución a la legislatura de este estado, para que quiten esa, esa, eh, esa enmienda, para nosotros las municipales poder ponerle penalidades a los empleadores. Pero mientras tanto, porque eso va a tomar tiempo, simplemente vamos a mandar eso como un, un método de apoyo, ¿no? El primer paso. Como quiera, nosotros vamos a poner una ordenanza en eso. Yo quiero para el dinero, ya está puesta, so, eso es, por eso lo digo en español, para que entiendan. Paro de, de, de ordenas, we are looking, eh, you know, they will stop in, it's working with Mr. Hampton, we are working to better, to see whether, eh, the, the ordinance, if we don't do it, the, the municipal course, some people recommend the municipal course, some others say the municipal license is entitled up. So, we still looking, I'm working on that. And like I said, this is not, um, we are gonna do this, but we have to do it right. Because I don't wanna have, um, that we'll put something out there, that eventually is not gonna do anything for the workers, which is saying, mainly that we're doing this for our community, and for the workers to get their, their hard earned money. Because I know they work very hard to get that money. Eh, por lo tanto, estamos buscando, una de las maneras que estamos buscando para ver cómo hacer, es imponer, eh, sanciones a la licencia de los establecimientos, de los empleados, o por parte de la corte municipal, pero hay que ver, porque todo eso tiene su, hay que investigarlo, hay que, eh, aprenderlo. So, pero no se preocupen, que viene tarde, no tan rápido como quisiéramos, pero va a venir. So, quería dejarles saber eso. So, we are working, and it's coming. It's taking a little bit longer than what you'd like to, but we probably, we probably have something that is good. At the end, and to just put something in the rush, because everybody wants it, and it's not worth it. So...
Gracias, muchas gracias. At this time, um, I put Mr. Hampton, you might say a little bit about the resolution, that, um, if you would like to, if you're bored of it, at this time.
The resolution that I prepared and I submitted to you all, recites the problems presented by state law and federal law with the doctrine of preemption, that prevents us from taking steps where they, they've acted. So this resolution, if you have not, it will go to the governor, and to our legislative delegation, and, and tell them of the problem. Tell them I think would be aware of it, but probably not open. And call on them to amend the law, uh, either by deleting that provision, or by revising it to say, provided that nothing contained herein shall prevent the enactment of an ordinance or ordinances to protect workers from weight set violations, and to impose punishment to such violations. And I, I hope that, if you decide to pay a visit, that perhaps other municipalities will do the same, and we can get some dialogue started there. Now, we may have to talk to the congressional delegation as well, because there's a similar problem, eh, with federal law.
Yes. Before we, you heard to say something else?
I, I don't, I don't want this to be too over capacity, so I just wanted to, maybe, uh, thank you all for, you know, working on this, we appreciate it, we know it takes time. Um, I also want to say, when we have a meeting, we usually call people three times, and I get about twenty people. I made one phone call on this one, and I've got a ton of people here, and even more downstairs, so...
Thank you.
You know, this is something that they do take seriously, and I know you folks are taking this seriously too, and I really appreciate all that you folks have done on this, and, you know, we hope to get the ordinance real soon, so thank you.
Thank you. And we have a motion to, to make a resolution?
Motion, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Thank you. Ya se la pasamos una resolución para el resto, pero vamos a seguir trabajando ellos, solo más duro para diciembre, vienen, lo más tardar, ya tener un hand.
At this time, we're gonna open the floor, any other comments or situations that the committee wishes to address to the council? When you come up to the microphone, please. Anything, if you come up, we already talked about the waste theft, you already talked about the water department, anything you would like to know that? Because we already have many discussions of that. Uh, unless it's something you know that we didn't have a chance to discuss, and just, they remain at rest, and, and respect.
Yes, absolutely. I'm, I, I really need to have a respectful discourse, and that's actually the issue that I'd like to speak to. My name, my name is Andy Shaw, I'm on the screen. Um, you've met, you said a few moments ago that, uh, there was an online publication that you believe is spreading lies. What's the name, the publication?
The, 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 it was an article today saying that the council was backing up on the work, waste theft ordinance. And I really got upset about that, because we never, I don't know where they got that, and they, I think it was you, bro.
It was, it was, it was.
Yeah, because I read it, and I was upset, I said, where did you get all this information? That, that is not correct.
Okay. Well, here's, here's, here's what I think, that is necessary for respectful discourse. Um, if, if you have an issue with anything that's in the paper, please send Charlie or myself an email. We, we want the paper to be as good as possible, as factually accurate as possible, and if you have a correction, like, we will, we will issue the correction, and, you know, we'll check it out, and if it looks, if we look accurate, we'll issue the correction. But it is not fair to use your position as city council president, to come here and call us a liar, call us liars. You know, that is not acceptable.
Well, I, I know. That's even more problematic, we're so liars, right? We say we're so liars, we never say...
Well, perhaps it isn't accurate, or perhaps it was, you know, it was a gray area, but it's not the same as moving on, and also, we will issue a correction, if, if that's the case, so... So, you can, now, now, please speak to the author.
Can I say, excuse me, can I, we say, we need respectful dialogue on both sides?
I agree.
Just finish, I don't want...
Let's, let's have, let's agree to this, let's agree to have respectful, uh, dialogue on both sides, because what we get is, is, you know, we'll get words like, we're covering up, we're doing this, and I got an email, and I'm gonna say right now, I'm not gonna answer, I get emails, I'm not gonna answer an email where the title of the email says, is everyone lying? You know what I'm saying? Because that's what I get, and then as soon as I see something like that, that makes an assumption that we are liars. So it goes both, you know what I'm saying, it goes both ways, you know, so, let's agree, let's agree...
I, I totally agree, that we should all be respectful, and we can try to work together and, like, solve these big problems, and just...
I, I, and, and I, and I said, you asked me for the whole, I know, I do, my question was to say, you asked the way.
I did, absolutely, I'm very proud of the publication. And we have, we have a print edition now as well, and we're, you know, we're working really hard on it.
But, and I hope, I hope, it's my hope, because I know that, that you guys are out there, and, and it's fine, it's, it's... I don't, I, I know you don't have a, a credentials as, as journalists, but I hope that when you do something, that when you put it in article, even if, if you know that nobody's, you know, if you don't have all the facts, and you haven't been able to talk to somebody, then you should be careful of what you put in there, and how you, and how you phrase your articles, because you're doing a disservice to our community.
If, right, if, if, right, if there's something that was, that was done that way, please tell us, and we'll check it out and issue a correction, because the accuracy is very important to us.
Hi there, uh, Jack Cato, author of this infamous article. Um, I just wanted to say, again, thank you for having this discourse with us, and, and repeat what Sean said, but also, within the article itself, you never actually said that you guys were backing off on it, just that you were hesitant at the last meeting, and that we didn't have the specifics. And I actually called you, uh, briefly cautious, so... I, I kinda perceived that more as a compliment than an attack, so I just hope you know that.
What was the headline?
Uh, the headline, um, I guess, backs off, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, anybody else want to put a question to us, or say counsel?
Can I get two minutes to go back from an employee's standpoint on the water department thing? I have my hand raised in the back, I'm trying to get your attention, as you close on our...
No, no, I said that we haven't said anything prior to that, the way that the...
I am a new hire.
Your name, please?
My name is Scott Tornowski. I'm a new hire for the city of New Brunswick, in their water department.
If you put a question...
I, I came in post all of this stuff happening, largely unbeknownst to me, okay? I came in to help resolve some issues in another area that they were having, as far as educating the people further, and helping out, lending my experience. I've got over ten years' experience, I'm a licensed operator with the state of New Jersey. And coming into this, I also have been appalled by the actions of one person, okay? I don't believe that it's any, and this is the first time I'm meeting any of you guys, I don't believe that it's the fault of Mr. Marashia, I don't believe that it's the fault of the good employees that we have there, I don't believe it's the fault of any of you all. I really, back there, was going through fits almost, because people are sitting here, and they're criticizing the water department, and they're criticizing the city council. I don't think that anybody has a clue how much you all are doing for the city in that water department, doesn't have a clue for the changes that that water department has gone through. I spent nine years with the richest county, Morris County. The richest county spend money, I will get whatever you want, I have never seen change personnel-wise, seen change as far as improving equipment, bringing help in from the outside. This city is doing everything it can to give you guys the best water. I will tell you all, right now, I know I have to address them, I will tell you all right now. I will not let the city down, nor my guys who are putting in twelve, fourteen, fifteen hour days.
You can't do that.
Nor will my guys, who are putting in twelve and fifteen hour days, and getting paid for eight of them, because they're dedication, they live in the city, they drink the water, they bathe in the water. I have kids that have drank the water through Somerset, where we sell the Franklin section of Somerset, not directly in New Brunswick. I have never been fearful of them bathing in it, you know, swimming in it with the pools, doing anything, drinking it. And I just would like to applaud you guys, and hopefully, I know I can't address them, but hopefully, put the city's mind at risk, that we are absolutely, absolutely taking the steps in assuring that this doesn't happen again. And there's been some comment to people here that live right outside the plant, or do whatever they have, you know, how they're perceiving our water department here. I assure you that under my watch, I am going to do everything I can do to help Mr. Marash, and help the DDP change, you know, turn this ship around, in the short, if this is a thing of the past and doesn't happen again. I just really feel like the positive changes that are coming out, if you read the DDP's press statement that they put out, I thought the second half of it was very, very positive, and I am proud to be a part of that. And I think that there needs to be a bigger shift, and a bigger focus on moving forward, and preventing the things from the past, whatever it may have been, the turbid days, and it's, you know, it's also important to note that I, I've got a lot of experience in with other water departments, and we have had turbidity issues, as does every other water department out there. It's something that's controlled by nature, we can't control it a hundred percent here, you know, and it, it's not a problem that's isolated within the city of New Brunswick. Our job is to come in and make sure that when the problem happens again, the proper people are notified, and the citizens of the... and the citizens of New Brunswick have the safest water to drink, because we're on it, and we're reacting to the issue, and, you know, fixing it before it gets out there. But I just wanted to take two seconds and say that I've kind of been upset because of the positive direction that we are heading. I think a lot of that's getting lost with unfortunate circumstances of the past, so thank you.
My name is Stephanie Hart, I stay at very big commercial also, I'm appalled at this, I really am, because when I pour, when you, when you turn the water on, it's cloudy as hell, you know, and everything. I bought my water, I don't even trust drinking this water, this water is nasty, it's toxic, you know what I mean? And to the point, you know, I wouldn't want this, you know, like, like some friends say, I wouldn't want this, to make the kids sick or nothing like that, it's just toxic as hell. Are you kidding? Something's gotta be done about this. This is crazy. You know, and we shouldn't have to, you know, be drinking something that's, that's gonna toxic. You know, even, even after, you know, even if I let my dog drink, I'd let it run for like at least ten minutes, or it'd get clear. You know, and that's the reason why I buy, even though I buy bottled water, I wouldn't drink this water, nothing but. There's something that's done.
Yes, we took Crownville?
Yes, Charles Crownville, New Brunswick, so it's on now. I stand by the headline and the rope. You had said at the last meeting that you would probably have an ordinance ready for this meeting, and instead, we got the agenda that says possible anti-waste step ordinance slash resolution. Sounds an awful lot like what you did to the anti-fracking people. Anti-fracking people came here, you let them on, you misled them to say you were gonna pass an ordinance, and then, whoop, we got a resolution that's ceremonial, it doesn't actually do anything. I believe I called it a toothless cop-out. But fortunately, those activists were great, they got some signatures, they forced your hand, and you had to pass that ordinance, and I fully believe that these activists can do the same thing. Obviously, they are very powerful, and you are obviously in a very vulnerable position right now, and I'm gonna say this, if you don't want it out there, you're backing off, or hesitant to pass a waste step ordinance, there's one way you can prove it: pass it. I'm not done, I'm not done. Regarding the water? No, no, I'm not done. Do I have to, do I have the same rights to speak as other citizens, or because you don't like what I'm saying?
We do have, we have more so than we can have talks, so.
This is my first time making public comments. Okay, so regarding the water, I want to thank the gentleman who spoke, and obviously was not involved in the cover-up. The problem is not the turbidity, it's the cover-up. And that is why everyone is so offended, because now, we can't know whether or not we can trust you, whether or not we can trust the reports we're getting. I've evangelized for tap water, I'm very against bottled water, I think it's the biggest scam in the history of scams. So, I've been going around telling everybody in New Brunswick, "We've got good water, trust me, I read the reports." And for three years, I was lying, and we have all been made to look like fools by this cover-up, and you are included in that, and you are not willing to take responsibility for it, and that is embarrassing, I'm just very upset about it. Obviously, this is something that, you have not regained my trust, and I don't think that you will. I just think.
I don't think I ever had it on myself.
Not true. You were, you were a new elected official, and you know what I said right when you got elected? I said, "Hey, you're gonna televise the meetings?" You said, "I've got no problem televising the meetings." And here we are, now, these meetings are not on television, unlike most of the other towns. So, it's been a lot of lies, it's been a lot of, you know, leading people on. You let the fracking people on, you said they were gonna pass it, you let, you let the New Labor people on. Pass it if you actually believe in it. I don't understand what is so hard about your job. At the end of the day, I'm very, very disappointed in this council, and if you want me to check with you before I write a news story, maybe you can give me your phone number, like past council presidents have done. You're not willing, you're afraid to give out your phone number to the public. You don't.
Jason, will you add my name to my document?
Um, I believe so, yeah.
All right, I'll get up to Jason then, but. Right, and I'm saying that means you don't represent me, you're not representing me. I'm clearly, I'm writing a lot of articles about you, we're doing a great job with the newspaper, I'm so proud of everyone's contribution there, and gosh, it would be nice if the council president was willing to give us their phone number, so we could call them about these stories and say, hey, what's going on? And, and quite frankly, if you would respond to any of my emails, that would be nice, but you're not doing the job, you're just not doing your job. I'll respond to your emails if you send them.
You better regain my trust. When you start doing articles that I.
What did I do?
That I accurate. She was a journalist, but when you, when you get your credentials, and you start writing the way you should be, you know, these, you know, stories that you bring, you know, these spinoffs that are not the right, then I will start trusting you like anybody else. But by then, and then we will work together and start, and keep going to the community activities, and doing that, because you're doing a great job of doing that.
Well, thank you. How's the Doing Relations Commission doing?
I have nothing to say about that at this time.
Right, because it's a do-nothing board that you're serving on, and I brought it up before, and you said, "Yeah, we got plans, we're doing stuff." Another lie. How about the NICSIL system? Why wasn't it used in the fire? Is the fire not a dangerous situation? A house is burning down, the smoke, smoke's spilling in the neighborhood, the water pressure's not on, the streets are blocked off? Why don't you use the NICSIL emergency alert system for that? Because we don't have a policy, and you say we have a policy. I'm tired of it, I'm tired of it.
Do you know it? Thank you.
I was.
I'll switch gears a little bit. The main point, because I guess of the entire meeting, is whether the administration covers up, or if they're aware of information, whether to give it to the public. And I'll, I'll switch gears on another subject. A few weeks ago, I had a meeting with Captain Miller. Within that meeting, he said that I never come to council meetings with me, I, my lawyer's attorney, but I never give him nothing to go on. So, I gave him a book that explained that a cop actually lost a book, it was neglect, or it was intentional, I'm not sure. But I mentioned, I asked him, it took a lot of courage for me to give that book up. No one was willing to give it out in the community, because they figured they would get treated a certain way, and they would think that he stole it or something. Even though people said that I stole the book, I found, you know, someone brought it to me. So, after the council meeting, I mentioned to Captain Miller, who's the officer that lost the book? He looked at me, he smirked, and he said, "Not telling you that." I'm, I'm the one responsible for giving the book. Now, the problem I have is, before we set that meeting up, in the hallway, he asked me, would I meet with him? I said, "No problem." He said, "Thursday?" I said, "No problem." I met with him. While we were talking, the ex-director lieutenant Joseph Cat, um, Director Joseph Katniss was with us. I mentioned about five officers that, I mentioned about Mark Pappas mentioning five officers that he would like to get off the force. Joseph Katniss corrected me. He said, "The five guys that Mark Pappas was talking about are the five guys that harass you, not the state." He's right, he's correct, okay, he said it correctly. So, that led me to believe that within the department, he just, he just acknowledged that, that there are officers who target certain people, and the department is aware of that. So, when Joseph Katniss mentioned that, the captain, uh, Miller, didn't say anything like, "Oh, officers target Tormel Pittman." He didn't say anything, and so we continued on with the meeting, and now I give a book to, and then there's an officer that now may have a vendetta with me, so that makes six officers that could possibly target me, and he's not willing to give the name. So, there's six officers that admit targeting, well, five officers that admit targeting me, then there's another possible one that may be lurking around, and he's still not given a name, so that builds a wall within the community. And I'm saying, why? Do you know the officer that left the book? It was a simple question, and why, why isn't the community allowed to know about an officer leaving a book?
Captain, yeah, sir. Two things. First, I acknowledge that Joseph Katniss, who is the ex-police director, made a comment to Tormel. I did acknowledge that there's facts to what was said. Secondly, that when Tormel handed the book over to me, it became an internal investigation. As I said a hundred times at these meetings, I cannot comment facts on an internal investigation. I'm not smirking at him, not releasing a name, I haven't told the council the name, I'm not telling you the name, I don't tell the name to anyone. It's part of an internal investigation. I told you the officer was disciplined for his actions, and that's where it can stay.
So, now we get to the point, now you understand why, just a few months ago, two police officers got beat up on Lee Avenue by a gentleman, and there were a bunch of people recording it, and nobody came forward and gave that footage up. Now you see why, because I took the risk to find the book, I, I heard the book circulating, I made some calls, and I got the book in my possession. And I, and my obligation, instead of looking through it, I, I brought it to the council, and gave it to, by from my hand, Captain Miller. And he took it, okay, I got the book now, now you stay over there. That's a slap in my face. So, now, if there's another book circulating, should I be idiot and bring it to you guys again? That's the, that's the wall that's being set up. See, that's the, that's the thing why people don't trust communities. You guys wanna, that's why people don't trust community. And, you know, I'll, I'll leave one, because they say I beat up on police, I'll give them a pass. But I know next time, what am I, I'm gonna ask the council president, if I was obtaining another book that a police left, an officer left behind, what should I do?
Well, I will tell you to do the same, if I see that, say, you're a citizen of the city, so my idea, if you don't want it to have any problem, just call, you know, make sure that it gets to one of us in a manner, or to the city in a manner that nobody that is you. I don't think that you have to worry about being targeted, because you gave a book to the, we started writing, and I, I thank you for that.
First of all, I gave the book, and I don't know the officer, who, the officer could be walking aside next week.
I don't know the officer there.
Yeah, you should know. That's why the public don't trust, and you should, and you should want to know. Just like the water situation, these are things you should want to know, I should want to know. And now, not to mention that, you can't strip under the rug that he heard that there are five, that Mark Pappas know five officers that targeted you. That's a lot of officers on one department for one guy.
He didn't say targeted people.
No, yeah, no.
I don't know the context of it, and I, I'm not saying, I don't doubt it, but I don't know the context of the conversation that we were having, so I really had a comment on the context of the conversation that we're having. I don't know why that comment was said, I wasn't there.
Asking.
So, what was the context, Captain Miller, about this conversation, that he says that five officers are targeting him?
I don't know the context. It was a conversation between Director Katniss and him. I was standing there, I don't remember the exact verbiage, I was almost six weeks ago now. I said, I acknowledge that they had a conversation, and that they spoke about the names. I don't recall, you know, exactly what was said.
So, this from the city.
If Mr. Tormel feels, if Mr. Tormel would like to come back in, like I said, I invited him to my office, we sat down for forty-five minutes and spoke. I think we had a pretty good conversation. If he wants to come in and give me the five names, as I told before, I'll be having an investigation on five people.
We sat down for forty-five minutes, I thought we gained some ground. Tormel Pittman, I want, I want to, I want to erase the gap between the community and the police. I think me and you can cover some ground. I think me and you can come from out within the city. That's the basis of the conversation that, the forty-five minutes that we had. Here you go, Captain Miller, here's a book. Who's the, now, we're recording.
Don't you give it here.
I gave it here.
Yeah.
I gave it to him here, yeah, no, yo, no, I gave it to him here. Listen.
I gave it to him.
Okay, pitch it, me give it to him. After having a conversation with Captain Miller about us moving forward, gaining trust with the community, me gaining trust within the police department, and I asked a simple question, who's the officer that got targeted? I'm not telling you.
Mr. Pittman.
I'm not allowed.
I just want, I just want a one question. I just, I just, you know, I remember that, you know, when you wrote the book, and thank you, I got it first, and I knew that there was no information. I said in front of you that I wasn't any compromising information there. My question, once in the meeting, Captain Miller, after that meeting, didn't you talk after that meeting?
No, it was before.
Was it before?
It was before, because people don't believe that I hold, you know, I hold back. He said, you know, your words aren't turning. I gave him some meat. You know, so it was, it was, it was before that. And, you know, like I said, that's the choice that you was, you guys, you may, you may think that it's a small issue, but you're not the guy that got five officers that, that the whole department knows they targeted. I don't, I don't ever come in here with personal issues, a car gets towed, I've been harassed by police since I was an adolescent. I don't never bring, I don't got a vendetta with the officers that harassed me. That's why I know cops so well, because of personal experience. I don't bring no personal situations here. I've never came and said, "I want this officer because he did X, Y, Z," to Tormel Pittman. I take my hits and I roll on them. I go to the entire department. I don't go to individual offices. I get harassed up all the time. I get, I get little, small petty situations hit at me all the time, and I take it like a man. But for the department to know this, what did that say, what does that say about the department now the council knows this? What's that to say about the council? Would your captain, a high-ranking officer, sat here and let a director say what he said and not?
That's directed, you know, saying those are.
Well, he's still snooping around here, poking his nose in. So.
He's a resident, because he is here. So, maybe that's why he's here, because he gives you a, like, you do, right, you're here.
But it was none of his business when me and Captain.
Do you hear him?
Yes, yes.
So, he gives you.
Wait, wait, it was not, not his business when me and Captain Miller was talking, he elected to come over here and get involved.
If I see, if I see, Mr. Katniss, I would address him, and I would inquire about what he said, what was the context, I wasn't there, and to see why.
I would like, I would like for you to look into the five officers that possibly targeted you.
Well, I'm gonna talk, Katniss doesn't.
That's, that's the big, that's what's.
I want to know why, you know, why did he mention those names that you alleged that he said? Where did he base those?
I'll explain the situation. Let me explain the situation, so you know what to address him on. Me and Captain Miller were talking, he brought his, he brought his, he came out there, and, and, and came in a conversation, and he said to Tormel, "Those five names that you said Mark Pappas would like to leave the police station, you're wrong." I came, I went and spoke to Mark Pappas, and he said, Mark Pappas said, "I didn't say that I want those five officers off the police station." I wrote those names down, because I said, "Those are the five officers that harassed Tormel Pittman." He said, "Those are the, those are the guys that I would think he would want off the force." That was the cover.
You said that those were the five officers that harassed you.
Mark Pappas, he said, "Put five names on the, these are the guys that I would like."
No, no, I did, but that's, they, what Katniss stated to you, that those are the five, that Mike Pappas said that those are the fights that harassed you.
Yes, yes, and I would never, I would never brought it up, if, if he didn't, if, thanks to Mr. Katniss for snooping around, I would have never mentioned you. I know officers, I know officers arrest me, I know what I do.
No, you have mentioned it on a previous meeting, that you had some situation, and you said the names here, if we have.
No.
You said the names here, yes, Mr. Pittman.
No.
When he had to, yes, you did.
I don't come in and mention officers that arrested.
You did.
My car's probably getting towed right now, and I'll, I'll pay the ticket, and I'll get it out of town, and I'll keep it moving.
No, no, when you told us the story previously about the, the situation with the names that you encountered with Mr. Pappas, you mentioned, you said he used to say that, and he told you to write some names.
I'm saying prior to that.
But that was prior to that.
Here's, here's another reason why, you know, I think that we run into a problem with the administration, the police department, and the public. And last week, I had a real, it was a tough meeting for me. And the meeting mainly, specifically human, that's for sure. I was kind of disappointed, and I kind of understand why the community think that things do get covered up. And it's because you're sitting in a presidential position, and you're, I don't know if you have power, I don't know what your stake, but I don't think you're effectively aggressively addressing our situation. I mentioned last week that police officers may be forced to buy tickets for mayor functions, you know, and I said that, you know, they may be under certain pressure, where they may have to purchase tickets, and that, you know, things of that nature, and you said, "I don't believe that." You said, "I don't, I don't."
I give you names.
No, you said, "I don't think an officer would, I don't think at all, I don't think that."
I said, "I was not aware of that, that's it, I wasn't aware, I was, I didn't, I didn't believe it, I said, I was not aware of that, and I said, you told me, there's an officer, I know that, you told me that this and this is going on, and I said, can you give me, give me the name? Can you say Officer Nine?"
Okay, okay, but you didn't, you didn't, you didn't.
I said, "He died."
But you failed, but you failed to do, but you failed to do an investigation. When people bring you, when people bring you information, whether it's about an officer or it's about water, you failed, you guys failed to do an investigation. I mentioned, last, last council meeting, right? I mentioned that, let me make sure, make sure I get it correct, so you won't, you know what I'm saying? I mentioned the fact about, there's a small group of people that still work for the city, and also receive a pension. And first, I'd like to ask, of that small group of, group of people, are any of them African-American? That retired with a pension and still works for the city?
The individuals that he's identified, they don't appear to be African-American.
Not one African-American? So, it's, it's even smaller group, all right, and I mentioned, I mentioned the fact, I said, well, you know, I didn't agree with that, because as much as people huff and puff, and it's, and they've worked for the city, I go to back for them, because they're getting paid less than nothing. They're getting paid less than nothing to perform miracles. While I'm certain a small group, none of them are African-Americans, I'm gonna be honest and say, you know, Caucasian stuff, right? Men, more, John, I'm white, right? Anybody Latino in this organ?
Please, sir, do not.
I'm asking a question.
No, no, just ask me.
And there, is there, is anyone Latino working for the city and also getting paid a pension while they're working?
Everybody retired from the city that now is working, that is Latino, who is getting also a pension? Is we are aware of who survived?
I'm not aware as we sit here today. If you're a. You know, if you're a, if you're an employee who's in the purse system and you retire, you can only earn fifteen thousand dollars at the tops in a public sector position. Those limitations aren't necessarily in place for police and fire. But as I sit here, I didn't anticipate that question, and I don't have the answer.
Alright. Let's not like...
I suppose I actually do stand corrected. You've already pointed out Mike Beltranina, so I guess the answer is yes, there is a person of Hispanic origin collecting a police pension and working in a civilian title.
Okay, so maybe he may be the first in history. My also, this is the problem that I have. This is the problem that I have also. When I raised that question, the first thing that came out of your mouth was, "Is that illegal?"
Is allowed by law. And I like it or not, Mr. Pittman, is allowed by law.
But, and I, and I, and, for one, I'm not mad at that rebuttal, I'm disgusted for a person to be an elected official and know that a group of people are getting treated way better than another group of people. And the question, the rebuttal that you gave was, "Was that illegal?"
I, the rebuttal I gave you, Mr. Pittman, is that according, based on your question, which is that there's people receiving a pension, others working, getting a pension, which is, because it's not the only time, but those, that's all the towns. There was a, and more article on it. We are not the only ones that that happens. And you were saying about it those weeks, getting people that have been retired, getting a pension and working for the city. And I told you that is that illegal? Is allowed by law? Whether I like it or not, that's, that's not... Because the law as it is allows it, allows that to happen.
Okay, this is not what...
In terms of, I just wanna, if it was something that it was allowed by law, then we could make it equal, is allowed by law. The state, unless we change, you know, the laws or maybe... And I think that Chris is trying to change the pension system. In terms of that, and I want to agree with him in few of the things that it is, those change reforms, I do agree with that. Because I do agree that there are some people, the same with the sickness and so forth. Personally, me and all the council, Rebecca, the person, believes that it should be before. But right now, that's allowed by law. If it was something that is not allowed by law, that is unlawful, then we will talk. Then, there will be an issue, Mr. Pittman. There's nothing unlawful, it's allowed by the law. Whether I like it or not, it doesn't matter because it is allowed by law.
I think it should be held at a higher standard. I don't think you should sit there and allow things that, if you... I think your morals at some point should kick in. I think just because something is legal or illegal, I think that your morals at some point should kick in because that's why people put you in a position of power, so you can make changes. So, if something is legal, you just go with it? That's not a person that's here to make change. I'll explain something to you. As me being, wait, wait, wait. As me being, as me being African-American. And there's one lady right here, she's an African-American country. I mean, she's an African-American female. At some point in time, one time in this country, it was illegal to rape African-American women. Let me paint a picture for you. You could get three white men to come into a academy, pull an African female out, take her off, and have her wear wear, and then send her back to her family and her husband, and while her husband wait and hope that they don't take too long with her. That was legal. So, if you were in a power position and you asked that question there, what type of moral texture or fiber do you have to... So, no, no, no.
You're upsetting me, Mr. Pittman, that your question, my moral question...
Yes, I was.
A, two instances that I totally...
Yes, yes.
It's like, and I don't have to, and you have your opinion.
No, because people, no, because people advocate, people advocate, right? People run around on, people advocate change, right?
It's totally different.
Right, Mr. Fleming? People advocate change, right? And if we're not here in a position to make change, then why even mention, why even be in that seat? If you're not there to make change. If you're not there to make change, why are you in that seat? I'll give you another example. A year ago, Councilman Fleming contacted me. Okay? He contacted me, we had a meeting in my office. We spoke for about hour before he became councilman. He sent me an email on Facebook. "Tormell Pippen, I'd like to meet with you because we could do a lot of great things in this city. We can make change." I haven't changed my tune in two years. I'm the same person I've been. So, for you to reach out to me and you not advocate what we talked about, what does that say about your character?
About your question, my character?
Yes, a question, your character.
Okay.
And I still have an ill intention.
But you're not going to break this torture. Once again, you say that you don't make things about you. But we've been sitting here for twenty minutes. It becomes a public forum. And this is, this is a business meeting. This is not just for me to defend my character because I don't have to stand here for twenty minutes.
You're an elected official.
See, once again, once again, if you wanna have dialogue, if you want to have a dialogue, we'll let you speak at the microphone, then we'll just sit back and listen. You wanna have a dialogue, we can have a dialogue. The difference between the change that I advocate and maybe the change that you do is because when I do things, I don't have to advertise them and let everybody know about it.
Thank you.
Because I'm used to doing things, not for myself, to get my name up in lights. But you don't, nobody, I don't allow anybody to question what I do on a daily basis and how I help people. And when I... Excuse me, can I finish? And when I do help people, it's not Glenn Fleming did this, I did that. Hey, look at me. Let me, you know what's the easiest way to break your arm? I pat your own self on the back. And that's something that I would never do in public because I don't have to prove my character to anybody. But people who know me, know my character and know what I've done for people.
Mr. Pittman.
So, my question is this then. Why did you feel this report and the contact? Why did you feel it was a...
I wanted us to open up a dialogue. So, we, first of all, I wasn't on the council. I wanted us to open up a dialogue so we don't talk...
I was the same person. Oh, wait, wait.
Mr. Pittman, come on.
Okay, 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 okay.
Let's stop, we were fine. Let's not go deeper.
Alright, let me just say this one question.
You've had the EBA here. I'm gonna right now practice environmental protection. I'm gonna save energy right now by no longer answering, having to go to my character right now because I don't feel like I have to defend my character in public right now. So, that's what I do with real freedom.
And I think he's, you know, it's, I don't think questioning the moral, the character of people...
It does, because I'm having to drive... Mr. Escobar, Mr. Escobar, anybody could question...
I would question you.
Okay, Mr. Escobar, Mr. Escobar. Mr. Escobar, anybody could question anything about me. One thing is, anybody who had me, I'm the same person in a private meeting, outside on the streets, in this council meeting, I'm the same exact person. And if somebody elects to meet with me, it's important, Tormell Pippen, that I meet with you? And I come and we have that meeting? Now, I can't question your character because you're not acting according to...